And it says it's recording. Okay, I'm gonna go and call a meeting to order for Pinecrest Village. It is now March the 26th at 1 o'clock in the afternoon. We'll start out by doing the pledge of allegiance. There is no flag here. We'll just, in your mind, you'll figure it out. He's got on a red and white, maybe had a blue shorts with him. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, proof of notice, it was sent out by email and also posted on the bulletin board because I posted it up there myself. Okay, proof of quorum, we have four directors present. The only one missing is Frank Couch. Just making notes. Okay, now, first I want to welcome everybody to our meeting for 2015, our first meeting for 2015 for the new board. I want to introduce the new directors. Jenny, I'll start with you first. You give them your name and tell them you are our vice president. That's all you have to do.
My name's Virginia Frey, but call me Jenny.
Okay, we got the fifth director here.
Yay!
Kim Johnson will be here shortly. She's running late.
Oh, we're not waiting.
How are you?
Okay. Bill, look at the camera because we've got a YouTube crowd up there.
I'm Phil Johnson and new resident, 11439, my address.
And he's the secretary treasurer. Frank?
Frank Couch, second year on the board, live at 1171 or 11719, Harris Point.
Dennis Hou, new to the board.
Okay, good. And my name is Bart Cudshaw. For those who don't know me, I served as your president from 2008 through 2010 and I've been suckered into it again for 2015. But we're gonna get through this year. We're gonna have fun. It's not gonna be... My board policy, our meetings are not as formal as other people like to do, like the three-minute timer. Symbolically, it's just been thrown in the trash. If you have something to say, say it, get to the point, but I'm not gonna call you on time. Unless you start repeating yourself. Okay? For the people here and the people that'll be going out there, I will be uploading this video and it will be posted on our website, which everybody in the community will be getting a copy via email of the link to go to YouTube to watch the video of what all transpires here. And let's see here. A reminder to the directors. Florida 720, back in 2010, Florida, the state of Florida required under 718, which is a sister that covers HOAs for condos. It requires all directors within 90 days of election to attend a 720 training class. That has more, or a 718 training class, but that has morphed into 720. So all directors have to attend a 720 class. I talked to Kim about this. There have been two so far and there will be a third one. She doesn't know the date or the location yet. It won't be here. It'll be at another community. But it is a free class. John Baccaro attended one last year on his own. I think it was $150 you said you paid for it?
No, I wound up, it was, there was no charge.
Okay, okay, good, okay. But it is required, that certification is good for five years. If there is a gap in your, as being a director, it actually can be carried out to seven years. Okay?
Are residents allowed to go to a seminar like that?
Absolutely, yeah, because it's for board members and future board members and past board members and people that are interested in doing something. Okay? It never hurts to know what the law sets.
Right.
And 720 is, if you want to get something to put you to sleep at night, start reading it. It will do that to you. It is very, it is very, very large. It's companion with 617, which is, covers HOAs. These, you'll get used to these numbers. Florida statute 617 and 720 are combined together, 718. And there's two other ones, there's two other Florida statutes, but our primary one is Florida statute 720. If you want to get a copy of it without printing it out on your computer, you could write your representative via email on the internet and his office will print it out and mail it to you. And, but I think in all the directors manuals, we have a copy of 720 in there. Now, for the fun stuff, on April the 15th at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, mark your calendar because we're gonna have a picnic. We're gonna, right under the common grounds behind the 16th tee box. These things generally run at past dark. I know our neighbors from across the street like to bring their fire pit across just to give us a little bit of light and scare off any bugs that may be wandering around. But it's, you bring a dish that you want to share with people and yes, I will be barbecuing. People look forward to that, especially my neighbor next door. But bring a dish to share with somebody. We will have a couple of barbecue pits over there. It's, bring, bring a chair, bring an umbrella because by April it could be getting quite warm. And bring your beverage of choice. Adult beverages are allowed. Okay? So the calendar, April the 15th, right after you mailing your tax bill, you can come over and celebrate and break your woes away. Okay, the format for the meetings. Directors are representatives of the community. They are not an elite group of people. They are representatives, they are communication devices for you, the residents, to pass information along to the board of directors. Don't be shy, don't be hesitant. Talk to them. They're just people just like you. They, they decided to put their name forward and volunteer their time to be part of the community and help lead the community as we move forward through 2015. Matt, a lot of you are familiar with my type of board. It's open comments. I don't want to get, you direct your comments towards the board. You do not direct your comments back and forth between residents. Okay? It can get into an arguing, it can get into a, an argument. Direct them towards the board. The board will allow each person to speak. Don't try and overspeak somebody else. If you have something to say, raise your hand. You'll be recognized. It doesn't hurt our feelings. Because we were elected to the board does not make us the five smartest people in this community. Believe me. I mean it. And then again, I already mentioned this, the three-minute rule is gone. The three-minute rule, get to your point, say what you gotta say, get finished with it. If you start getting redundant, I'll say, okay, that's enough. Okay? One thing to make notes of, this goes to the people that are attending and the YouTube viewers. If you have a repair issue or a maintenance issue on something in the community, sprinkler heads, grass cutting, weeding, tree trimming, anything that has to do with, if the board does not handle that, that we have a community manager, Kim Johnson's office, Community Management Services. And their phone number, get a PIN, is 727-816-9900. For YouTube viewers, if you didn't get your PIN in time, back up the video and run it again. You'll be able to get it the second time. With that being said, we do have a proof of quorum that all directors are present. Only person missing right now is Kim Johnson. The president's report, we've already gone through. Committee reports, I don't think there's anybody here from the existing committees before. Rob Bruno was grounds. Barbara was ACC or Architectural Control. And I spoke to Kathy and Leon this morning. Their health is preventing them from becoming actively involved in the social issues, but we do have some volunteers. We'll wait for Kim on the community management report. Treasurer's report. Bill, how about giving us a treasurer's report? Of what you have.
Yeah, what I can make out so far, and I just have a month-ending February, February 2015. It seems to be that we have approximately 14,500 in a money, one money market account. Then we have another money market account with 12,100. So right away there's $27,000 approximately. Then we have an operating account that has 37,000 in it. It takes in about 7,000 a month with dues. They spend about 7,000 a month. So if you, the end of February, there should be, if it was zeroed out, there's an extra approximately 22, $24,000 in the operating account. So we've got an excess of somewhere over $50,000 in our accounts. Whether we need to keep that or not, that'll be a decision later because we really don't have any capital improvements to be done or anything like that. So we don't have any roof repairs or anything like that, just the, the wells which are gonna go away in a couple of months. So really, it's probably a lot of excess in there. Okay?
Actually, you brought up about, there's one, I know there's one of this, $11,000 in a reserve account. That reserve account was set up for the wells back in between 2008, 2010 to protect the wells in case there was an issue with one of the wells to keep them maintained.
Is that one of these, one of these money markets?
Correct, yes it is.
Yeah, that's this one.
Kim, we're actually videoing now, so I want you to introduce yourself for our YouTube viewers. Let them know who you are so they can put a face together with a voice.
Okay.
And it's all yours.
Okay, I am Kim Johnson from Community Management Services and my apologies for being late to you and the audience. And welcome to everybody for coming to the meeting.
Okay, I've gone over if there's any maintenance issues. It's not a board issue. It is a management issue. And I put the phone number up there. If you got your PIN, here it is again, 727-816-9900. That's Community Management's number.
They answer 24 hours a day.
Right, they do have an answering service after working hours, which works great. And they, Nancy and...
Nancy or Kelly.
Nancy, Kelly, I was gonna... They answer the phone for you. They're very, very nice to work with. Don't be hesitant in calling them if you see a problem. Even if it's not on your property. If you see a problem, your neighbors that are out of town, the snowbirds that are gone, if they have an issue with water sprinklers blowing the head off and you see the guys are coming up, make a report of it. Let's not waste the water. Okay? In, in this package, there are the minutes from the previous meeting?
Previous two meetings because January, nobody had a chance to review and we didn't, we had Jenny on the phone, so she didn't have a chance to see it. So there's a January 7th which was done and then the March 17th, which was the organizational meeting.
Okay. And the annual meeting, there's only two of them because the annual meeting will be reviewed and approved next year when the election occurs. So if you have a chance to brief through the minutes, see if there's any corrections that you see. It's not a lot for January the 7th.
Okay. I move that they both be approved?
Let's do them one at a time. So you make a motion?
Move the motion that the January 7th, 2015 minutes be approved?
Okay, do I have a second motion?
Okay, a second. Any discussion? Any audience, any audience discussion? Okay? Signify a yes vote by raising your hand. That's unanimous. The second one is the March 17th meeting that was immediately following the annual meeting. Where we elected officers, we only had three people at the meeting. We didn't have a chance to do a whole lot of work, but we did elect officers. If you review those very quickly.
And I'd like to so move again that we approve those minutes of March 17th, 2015.
And we have a second. Any discussion from the board members? Any comments from the audience?
Nope.
All in figure, raise your hand. It's unanimous. Old business, we have none. So we're gonna move into new business.
Did you want to do the treasurer's minutes?
Mm-hmm. Already went through that. I'm running down the list, doing that memory thing. Okay, new business. First item was tree, oak tree and palm trimming. We have three bids on that and I was a little bit shocked on some of the prices when I got them today.
And you know, they're all over the, I'm gonna hate to interrupt, they're all over the board. I mean, some are like $22 for a palm and then say $100 for the oak tree and then the other ones, $40 for the palm and $40 for the oak tree. It's like, okay, well that doesn't make sense. I'll come one so much different than the other one, so who knows?
And you can split it up.
Well, let's go there.
And yeah, this is the same, these are the same bids I gave you who were at the organizational meeting.
Right. Alright, let's just go through these. Panzers, PAsners has given us a bid of trimming the oak trees at $40 each and trimming the pines.
The pines.
Is that pine or palm?
I think he meant palms.
Well, huh, so.
It does say, I know, it does say pines.
Yeah.
I'm not sure why.
We don't have any pines.
I thought that was, that should have been palms. It was supposed to be, and I...
We'll have to get an update on this particular one. And that includes removing debris. He's giving us a quote on the trimming the oak trees at $40 each and trimming the paw, the pines. But we'll have to get an update on that to see if the palms are $40 each. Trimming palms, that's pretty expensive.
$40?
They shouldn't be.
Okay, wait, Frank's got his hand up first.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, John. I'm sorry, apologize.
Can you tell me what trimming an oak tree consists of? I mean, is it just up to 10 or are they doing the entire circumference of the tree?
Well, we have bids that I think encompass that. You can, if you, if you travel around Heritage Pines, you'll see some oak trees, they've trimmed way up. They've, they, you see a lot of, a lot of the trunk and not much of the canopy. They've trimmed them way up and I think we have a bid in there for that one. Another one is to trim it up to 10 feet off the ground and to cut up on the outside of it. I don't know if they do a lot of trimming on the inside, but it's primarily designed, these oak trees are wind catchers. And if we have a storm and those oak trees are out there, you can count on those trees being pulled out, some of them gonna be pulled out of the ground. Okay? Now, Matt, you had something?
I wanted to ask, what is the height of the palm tree?
We trim the, the grounds, grounds maintenance will trim up to 15 feet?
10 feet.
Or 10, okay, 10 feet.
At the lawn, yes.
Okay, 10 feet. And then anything above that, we have to pay for. And we'll talk about that in just a minute. Because last year I got mine trimmed.
I did too.
And it was $15.
I paid 25.
Okay. This year, it's different. Well, we're gonna get, we're gonna get a, a stable price. So anything above 10 feet that you have to pay for, below 10 feet, they'll trim for you. Okay? So you have to, you do have to request. They're not gonna automatically trim it because some people do not want to trim their palms until that frond is dead. Some people, it's, it's a personal preference. If you have a low tree or you have a tree that needs trimming, it's not automatically, it's gonna be trimmed. You have to contact Community Management and make the request that your palm tree be trimmed. They're not gonna do it automatically. Even if you have dead fronds lying there, they're not gonna trim them. Okay?
Another thing, could we have our gutters cleaned? Could we have either somebody come in here and do the gutters and we pay for it or...
Yeah, we could look into that, especially...
Because the fact is, I mean, we're all elderly.
Right.
I don't go up on the ladder on the roof, so I'm...
I don't know the things that are gonna take you in sidewalks and driveways.
My other neighbor, so I'll just walk down to your house.
Okay. Okay, and, and I will, I'll make a note to check on that with Heritage Pines. Kim was just not bringing up a point that she thinks that Heritage Pines is doing some of these things that we're not capable of doing. It's not worth it to pay $20 to pull your, pull the gutters clean. And if you fall off the ladder, you go to the hospital, it's gonna cost you a lot more than 20 bucks.
Well, the last quote I got was 50 bucks.
Oh, last quote. To clean, to clean up?
Yeah.
Dennis is going, I'm going into business.
I'm into long business.
Okay, that's one quote that we have. Let's go to the next quote. This is from Daniel Ryan. I assume this is our grass cutting company? Okay, we have a variety of different quotes. Washingtonian palms, I didn't know we had any of those in our community.
We have a few.
It says three of them. I don't know where they are, but Washingtonian palms, those are the ones that are, they're lower with much heavier frond branches.
And they've got that like spiky looking...
They're thorns.
Thorns.
Yes. Trimming those is $32 each or $32.50 each. Clean palms, that's the majority of what the community has is clean palms. They're $22 apiece, so it saves you $3 and it costs me $7 more. Okay? Light oak trim, explain light oak trim.
Okay, um, light oak trim would be like you're saying, the elevating and you know, like maybe some arid branches that are kind of out beyond the canopy a little bit. And then when you get into, I think one of them calls it inner pruning and one of them calls it heavy pruning, where they're actually deadwooding them and cleaning them up and really, yeah. Now, you're not allowed in Pasco County to top any trees, so you can't do the top, but you can selectively prune them inside and open up so that the wind doesn't catch them and they're not just great big balls that are looking for the wind to damage them. But that heavier pruning is when it's also doing the interior.
Okay. The list, the list, all of us we had here who trimmed them, they did a fantastic job because they opened up all of the trees in the center.
That actually was Panzer.
Yeah.
Who?
Panzer.
Panzer.
Which is the first bid.
The first bid at $40 and I, I'm gonna go with the presumption, not assumption, but presumption, that they are gonna be doing the same type of trimming that they did last year. They're very, very efficient. If you have to get a tree removed, not to advertise for them, but I know people that have gotten it removed. I used a different service because it was a little bit cheaper and it cost me a lot more because I had to do a lot of the work myself. They're, they're very, very good about getting them cleaned up.
I contracted them two years ago. He's still trying to get a permit to do them.
On who?
Panzer.
To remove your oak tree?
To remove two trees.
In the backyard.
Backyard, they're sycamore. They are the worst trees that he planted here.
Well...
Besides the oaks.
I'll give you a little bit of insight on that. Pasco County, I can't remember the name of the woman that, that gave us this information. She gave it to the main board, is that the oak trees, I think, according to what they say, should be no closer than 50 feet from a house. And as you know, they're a lot closer than that. They have an extensive root system and they spread out pretty good. They allow removals of trees without permits if they're under 12 inches in diameter. And they, they come out and they'll, they measure it. It's almost like an honor system though now because they don't have the personnel to come out and measure these trees to guarantee the permit. They relying on the tree service to get it. So the tree service is saying, they're giving them, oh yeah, it's smaller than 12 inches or it's a dead tree or it's doing this or it's doing that. And they get the permit. So generally, if you get one of the tree services to get, they'll get you, they'll get the permit included in the price. Pasco County is actually playing with the concept of anything under 22 inches.
Is that a circumference or?
Diameter.
And that's if you, they usually measure it by four foot up, what...
Correct, chest height.
Okay.
What that is.
Well, what, what, if it's 12 inch in diameter, what is the circumference of it? The idea of...
You need to use pi.
You're actually correct. You're exactly right. Any particular flavor?
Pi R squared is 3.1416 actually.
Anyway, it's...
The tree guy don't know.
They, they don't, the tree services don't know pi. They just say, we can, we can get, we can get the tree removed. And if they say that, they will get, they will get the permit. If you get a tree removed, this goes to everybody. It's an exterior change to your property.
Yes, we know that.
I cannot stress this strongly enough. Because we are a maintained village, the first person you have to take it to is our architectural control person, which I assume that Barbara is gonna renew herself on that?
I have no idea.
Okay, right now Barbara...
The way she feels about this whole thing, if no one wants to volunteer to do this, she'll do it. I mean, it has to be done.
Okay, so Barbara just volunteered herself into a position?
Oh, I thought maybe I had somebody.
Rob Bruno was the alternate. Mike Hopsey has done this before too.
He was also, right.
So we can, we can talk to Mike Hopsey. As you know, Rob Bruno's moving on. Anyway, any exterior change, that means if you're changing plants, if you're painting your house, if you're painting your door back to the same color that you had on there. You've gotta get, you've gotta get the form you can get off the internet or you can come up to the main clubhouse at the lobby, at the lobby desk and ask them for an architectural control change form. And down at the bottom, it'll, it'll tell you whether it's a maintained or non-maintained village, what village number it is. The first person you have to get it approved by is taking to Barbara Wachino. And she will approve or not approve based on what ACC guidelines are.
They just, they just gave her a new, a new book.
Color chart.
Yeah.
Okay. And then you will take the form up to the main desk. And they will log it in for you. And I think the Architectural Control Committee meets twice a month.
Right.
Or every two weeks. So they could, they will go through it. Generally, it's gonna be approved if you're making an addition onto the house like a patio, covering your lanai. I can't stress it strongly enough. If you don't get it approved, they have the right to tell you to remove it. So get it approved. Get it done the right way the first time. On tree, on, let's see, I lost my training call.
The trees, the permit.
Guy who takes the tree line gets the permit and sends them a copy. Correct. Thank you, Charlie. It's exactly right. The, the guy, whoever you contract with to remove your tree, after you get, you'll get a, Barbara will approve it first. And then you will, you may get a subject to approval from ACC. Generally, they don't like to approve anything until they actually get the permit. But they're familiar with these tree services. If you've contracted with so-and-so and they'll usually give you a quote, you'll attach it to your architectural control form. They'll look at it and say, okay, Panzer is doing a pre-removal at this address. They will get the permit for us. We will make it a subject to approval once we receive the permit. And then you, they, once they get, once they have the permit and they'll come up, then they'll remove the tree, give you a copy of the permit and it's done.
Well, Barbara, Barbara goes through the, the book that they gave her. When someone brings in a, a design review change, she scrutinizes it. And if she feels that it's not gonna pass the main board, she'll get the person and tell them, you know, I gotta reject this.
And that's good.
And this is what you're gonna have to give me in order to satisfy the board.
Right.
It's, it's actually like pre-approved before it goes to the board, so.
And sometimes a village can override the main board. Sometimes a village can present the argument that nobody in the village has an issue with it. Say if you want to get, your color, like mine was painted the color, it's called legally blonde. Well, suppose I like legally platinum blonde a little bit better. The ACC may approve the alteration in color because the village is saying it's okay. But if you want to get, you want to get bright yellow with purple polka dots, good luck.
Ah, damn.
It'll never go true.
Let's move on to the second bid. The second bid is Daniel Ryan. Again, I think they're a little hefty in their prices. A light oak trim, which is just trimming the low lying branches. And anything that's hanging over is 100 bucks. Heavy oak trim, which is the same thing that PAsners quoted $40 for, they want $2.25. And backyard oaks, I'm still trying to figure out what a backyard oak was. I don't think there must be two people.
Yeah, there's two in the backyard. Almost all of them are in the front.
Okay.
There's two of them.
But what are the new trees now? Some of us that had the fences moved, we now have trees in our backyard. Are those oaks?
God, oh yes.
Sycamores and...
I don't have a sycamore.
No, those are, those are scrub, those are scrub oak or something.
There are pines, some, past, no, I'm saying past the fence, there's pines.
No, we, when we move the fence, that, a lot of the, about, probably about six, about 10 or 12 trees became, moved on the inside of the fence. And, oh, speaking of which, you are required by Pasco County and HP that you have two trees in your property. So if you want to get one of them removed and you have two trees, you gotta replant. Okay? And then the third bid is from USA Tree Service.
The back one.
They're, they're saying, well, I don't know what they're saying. To elevate the oak trees, I guess to the 10-foot level is $50.
50 bucks, yeah.
That's like the light trimming.
And then the heavy ones, the 115, like the one...
115, and then the trim of palms is 35. And there's, okay, so based on that, I actually, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve Panzer's. Subject to verification, trimming the palms, I'd like to, I'd like to actually see a new price on that.
That's what I was actually doing. I was texting Nancy to call in. That's why if I ever do that during a meeting, it's uncalling my assistant to try and get additional information that came up.
Because if not, we can, we can trim the oaks for $40 and that's a heavy... Because if not, we can, we can trim the oaks for forty dollars and that's a heavy trim. They'll get in and trim the inside of them and the outside of them and they do a good job, they're in and out and gone and you never see them. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna make the motion that we approve, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'll go through a little bit of parliamentary, parliamentary procedure because you, because we're new at this. You make a motion to approve, you get a second and then it's open for discussion.
Okay.
Okay? And that's just.
They're kinda doing this backwards, but I won't be, no, no, I'm saying, it's more casual.
Yes, we are. The three minute timer has been symbolically thrown in the trash.
I like the easy.
This is easy. All right, uh, so I make a motion that we approve Pasner to trim the oak trees.
Second.
Okay, and do we have any board discussion?
Yeah, I'd like him to detail his estimate, how, you know, how many oak he's gonna trim, how many palms he's gonna trim. So there's no problem when he comes to trim them and says, well, I told you I was trimming oaks, but I didn't know there was seventy-five of them, I thought I was only doing sixty. And I think if somebody can talk to him, I think he can come down and the price instead of forty dollars on a palm tree, around twenty-five dollars on a palm tree. Forty dollars is way too much.
Well, but we don't know if it's pine or palm that he was talking about.
Okay, but that's, we have to find out.
Yes. We, we can always, we can always sit up there and go back to Ryan's. Ryan's did tree, my palm trimming last year, they were very careful, they, I call them torpedoes, seed pods, those things weigh a ton. Uh, before they open up, they weigh a lot.
Yeah, because he has twenty-two, which is a good price, but then he's ridiculous on the.
Correct, well, we can split them up.
Yeah.
We can split them up, um, we'll, we'll, hopefully she gets a response back before the end of the meeting, we'll come back to this and revisit the palm trimming, but we have a motion, uh, any, any resident, any other discussion from the board?
I wanna think if you tell Panzer's that we like his price on the oaks, but we have another quote for somebody else to do the palms for twenty-two, can he come in equal?
I agree, keep it with this one guy.
Right, so we keep with that, one person coming in.
Okay.
So we're gonna ask her for a new bid basically is what we're gonna ask.
We're gonna ask for a clarification whether it's pine or palm and then if it, if he says, I meant palm, I said, I really meant pine, he may be thinking that he has to climb up the pine trees and trim off some of those in the common ground and, um, where palms.
Yeah, by the sign or something.
Yes, but that's, I think, uh, HP actually takes care of that area. Yes, that, that is their, that's their little forte.
If I understood your motion, it's approving Panzer for trimming the oaks.
Correct.
And then I actually made a note that if the forty dollars includes the trimming ups, we presume it does, you know, that, that it includes the inner and outer trimming.
Right, the same trimming we got last year from.
And then, uh, we'll clarify that.
Or, actually it was two years ago with the same trimming. It's a, it's a heavy trim.
Could, could we get him to actually state that?
I would.
Heavy trim.
I absolutely.
Yeah, let's clarify it. Clean up the insides and.
And how many?
And how many?
Right, exactly. And it's easy enough for us to count them.
Yes.
It's fewer than there were last time. A lot of people have removed them.
And the lawn is so much better for that too. The lawn has come up so much better.
Yeah, actually, um, uh, I, I'll get to that in just a minute, but the, we did get our grass finally cut yesterday. I called Kim's office and I said, it's somewhere between a tropical jungle and just totally out of control. And, um, I was coming up to the main board meeting at the time, so I, and they said they'd email me, I said, well, I won't get it till later on today or tomorrow. Um, and during that four hours that I was gone, the five hours that I was gone, they were up there, they cut the grass, the grass looks really good. Um, the tree, the yards that do not have trees in it, the sunlight seems to be encouraging the grass. The palms, the pot, the oak trees are pulling nutrients from the ground, plus they're blocking sunshine getting to the grass and St. Augustine seems to really love the sunshine, so not, not encourage anybody to get rid of the oak trees, but if you get enough with it, more sunlight will get into the grass, the grass will revitalize itself. Okay.
I'd like to amend your motion to if that, if Panzer comes down to twenty-five dollars, you just make it twenty-two, whatever, you just make the executive decision and go, hey, do, do it all.
Well, actually, we have a bid for twenty-two.
Yeah, so if he will.
It becomes down to max is twenty-two.
Well, I would be, I would be happy with twenty-five.
I'll try for twenty-two, but he comes back with twenty-five.
Try for twenty-two because we have a bid for it.
We have a bid for twenty-two.
No, we could go to the other guy who.
Another guy does a good job.
But wait.
But will he do it for twenty-two if he's not gonna do it?
One at a time.
That's right. Will, will this other guy come in and just do the trees for twenty-two bucks if we're not giving him the whole cut?
As an aside, yes, they will, because you can call community management right now and have your palm tree trimmed. Last year it was fifteen, obviously, I guess it's gone up a little bit, uh, but you, and although from that it went down.
Cause they're, cause they're growing, yeah.
Okay.
They're growing.
And they, they can come in, they can come in and trim them on an individual call for the twenty-two dollars. So why should we, why should we give them three dollars more for a tree? So we'll stick with the twenty-two dollars.
So will you amend your motion?
Yes, I'm gonna amend them.
Let me adjust that.
Okay, well, I, I'll restate the motion, approve Pasner to trim the oak trees at forty dollars each and trim the palms at twenty-two dollars each. We would like a clarification of the trimming. Hey Pam.
Hi, sorry.
Just to confirm, it is a heavy trim and, um, that is my motion.
And how about the number of trees?
And verify the numbers, yes.
Yeah, I'll verify the number.
Okay, actually, we have a count of fifty-two oak trees, but, but two backyard oaks, so there'd be a total of fifty-four oak trees. The second bid actually counted the trees and there's seventy-nine clean palms, um, there's.
Eighty-two palms, three of which are Washingtonians.
So they do eighty-two of them at twenty-two dollars a piece, that's about seventeen hundred dollars and, um, fifty-four at twenty, at forty dollars, that's another twenty-two hundred or about, so about four grand altogether, okay? We have the money in reserves, we have plenty of money in reserves, as Bill gave you in the, in the treasures report, we're gonna spend some of that money that you've been putting into this, instead of coming out of the pocket of the residents, the community is paying for this. Okay, do I have a second for the motion? Bill Johnson, um, any further board discussion? Any resident comments? Lou Holsher.
I just have a question. Uh, when it comes time to the trimming of the palms, can a resident just kinda go out when they're being trimmed and say, yes, I'd like that front cut, cut, or no, you're going a little too high or?
Yes.
Can, can we inform the residents when it's gonna happen so that, you know, if they're available, they can come out and they can say, yes, this is what I want, and no, this is not what I want?
Yeah, so they'll scalp your palm and you didn't wanna scalp and you only wanted one.
Actually, my experience last year with, with our, uh, grass cutting company, Ryan's, the guy asking, I came out there and he says, well, do you wanna cut this one off? I said, no, I said, this one really isn't low enough yet, but they were extremely com, I was extremely comfortable with the guy way up in the air and dealing with the torpedoes or that's what I call them, these seed pods, cause they are very, very heavy, he'll cut them almost all the way through, he somehow gets his leg hooked around it, his arm hooked around it and he twists that thing around and he finally cuts somebody, when he, he's gotta hold up the weight, it falls out of the garden.
And it goes right down like a, like a bullet.
Oh, it's, you don't wanna be underneath one of those when they come down.
I was up on a ladder cutting those things.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had me too.
Just, just to clarify, in times gone by, um, it's kinda been verboten to talk to contractors.
Why?
That was the rules that were established.
Why?
Because if they're trying to do a new thing, everyone's taking ten, time.
Okay.
So, so that's why.
Cause people are like, they're trying to master things rather than know.
The new board.
Okay.
Can, can, can we talk to a contractor and say, yes, I would like this cutter, no, I don't.
Oh, trimming trees, yeah, no problem at all, but when you get into, when, when they get it, they're out there in the grass cutting cycles and somebody says, well, can you come over here and take care, pull these weeds for me?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, on, on the tree trimming, uh, particularly the palms, oak trees, I'm not too worried about those things, I think you can.
Go trim and you'll still come back.
You can try and kill them and you can't. Uh, but the, but the trimming the palm trees, yes, sometimes, um, I, I had one incidence with the, with the previous grass cutting company, United Sprinklers, where they came out and trimmed my palm and I had a stalk.
Yeah.
I left the tree, it was looking really good and when I came back, I had a stalk and he said, that's the hurricane trim.
Oh, God.
Okay, so, well.
The wind hits that and takes the heart out and kills the palm.
And, yes, and you gotta be careful too when you're trimming them, is that there's a, um, like a, um, like twine, I guess you'd call it, it wraps around the palms, if you cut that off of there and those palms are allowed to open up, you'll kill the tree.
Really?
Okay, yeah, the heart is exposed and when it does, it kills the tree.
Yes, do magnolias need to be trimmed?
Not, not typically.
No, uh.
I didn't think so, but.
I've never seen a magnolia trimmed, you don't, you, they are designed to be a heavy foliage, they have very, very large leaves, heavy foliage, um, uh, I've never seen one of them trimmed. They produce their flowers in the spring.
Yeah, I didn't know.
So I've never.
Typically, no. If it's too close to a house, sometimes they have to or a screen enclosure, but normally they do not.
Okay.
Our, our current landscaper, Ryan, when you guys negotiated, I don't mean you guys, but the previous board, didn't they include in the contract the trimming of the palms?
No, it was excluded.
Was, was, was extra then?
Right.
Okay.
It was excluded.
I wouldn't wanna see us pay twice in the contract and then.
Right, it was excluded purposefully, only like in request, dead palm fronts.
Yeah. And again, the trimming will, if you, if you have an issue after we do the trimming, contact community management about setting up a work order to come out there and trim your palms or your trees.
Yeah.
Okay? All right, any other, any other discussion? Cliff?
Can we also ask that the, um, palm trees on vacant houses also be trimmed? Cause I got a vacant house right next to it.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a community wide trimming, okay?
Typically, if someone's not home or doesn't have a preference, they usually do what I call the ten o'clock, two o'clock.
Okay.
Trim where they're like this, not this and not that, cause if you do the nine o'clock, three o'clock, then those are already sagging and it won't be long before they're drooping. So it's usually a ten o'clock, two o'clock cut.
And they'll be looking for ones that are getting very, very close to houses, that you could have a front that's looking really good, it could be at a sixty degree angle, but the bend over is almost on the roof.
It's touching the roof.
And, and you wanna get it off those shingles.
Yes, you do.
So, all right, any other discussion?
Question.
Yes.
Are we gonna have somebody from the board watching them cut so we watch the way to, you know?
I know, I'll try to be there.
Yeah.
I mean, okay.
We could do that. Um, we already have, I'll talk about this a little bit in the committee.
I nominate Dennis.
Dennis has a full-time job.
Not only him, but he's, you know.
We'll see.
Okay. All right, um, so.
Hold that thought.
We have a motion on the floor, uh, no further discussion, I call for both signify yes by raising your hand and it is unanimous. Okay, second agenda item is Aquarius water treatment. As you know, or as I've become aware, Aquarius are, are company that's been handling the inhibiting rust on the houses. If you look at the houses, they're not doing a very good job and they haven't been paid in several months now, have they?
We've, we've held the last three checks and they haven't even, that hasn't even drawn their attention. We've met them out here five or six times in the past year.
They're in denial, they test the water, they do, they do this and say there's no rust on it. I don't know why they tested the water, cause all you gotta do is look at the side of the house. There's your evidence that it's not working. And they're, um, what they're doing is they're trying to delay the expense of putting in new tanks. These tanks have been in there since probably two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, they have never been replaced, they, their answer to it is always, well, we need to put a new, another tank in, another tank in the series, it's not that. The tanks are, are full of rust. They, they, uh, the last board had the wells pulled out and they were full of rust and they had to be cleaned up and put back in. Reclaim water, let's, as an aside on this, reclaim water project, they're doing an emergency attachment right now in three villages back over here, Hilltop Village, Majestic Pines, and I forgot the other one there, all, all their wells have failed and they're doing an emergency hookup for those villages. But the reclaim water project in earnest will start on, in, in the latter part of April, that's the tentative schedule. We are dealing with a government agency, so it may be delayed. Um, their initial part of the project, all, all the golfers are familiar with, there's a pump house on hole number five, there's two wells, there's two ponds there and they are gonna be bringing a twenty-four inch line into that pump house and from there, they'll be spreading out to the rest of the community, to the communities. Lennar, in their all-knowing ways, when they put in their reclaim water line, they put a six inch line along county line road, it was not done legally and it's definitely not, uh, the proper size because multiple villages started pumping water and all of a sudden you see your pressure go down and you're not getting coverage or they, we were pulling out of ponds before and it wasn't working. This reclaim water project, they're building the facility down on Hudson Avenue, it's a two million gallon facility that's dedicated to heritage ponds. So, uh, we, we are the first one to sign up for it and so that's what's gonna be, we'll have two million gallons to, to cover the fourteen hundred and six homes and reclaim water, uh, currently for heritage ponds, they're not charging it. I think we're being quoted a price of twenty-one or twenty-two cents per thousand gallons.
It's bouncing, yeah.
It's, it's really cheap and you are gonna have the staining on your house. One issue I, I have seen though with staining, the rust removal, is it may affect color on paint. I saw one garage door, I suspect they sprayed a rust off or something on there and the garage door is now a different color on one, one section.
Oh, boy.
So we gotta be real careful with that.
Just on the reclaim water, there's a couple of things is if you have a pet, you don't wanna take them out when the grass is wet and you don't want it to overspray on your car, cause you get that funny mirror looking staining on it, so you do wanna make sure that, that that, and with as much, I've never seen a place that constantly has a breeze, especially your street, so if you have the blowback from the sprinklers, you know, if you park your car in the garage, great, but you wanna watch that, rinse it off your car.
Okay, thank you.
If you get it on your hands too, the water, you don't wanna put your hands to your mouth cause that's not.
It's reclaim water.
Yes.
And, and they reclaimed it from somewhere.
It's good for the grass.
Anyway, Aquarius, I'm sorry, well, yes Pam?
I don't know if I'm stepping over what you're gonna say, but did you clarify how I don't know if I'm stepping over what you're gonna say, but did you clarify how we're going to clean off the orange from the houses? Now, I'm not saying every house is bad, or every sidewalk is bad, but some of them are really terrible. There is a house on, um, right behind the fifteenth green, that there, it's orange all the way up to the roof. It is, it's unsightly, and as a golfer, I'm out there all the time, and I look at them going, oh, these people should be told to either paint their house or they should have somebody remove that, and it's all down the side of their house as well. It's awful.
But that's, is it one of the vacant ones?
No, I don't think it's vacant.
Is it right?
My comment with painting, Pam, my comment with painting, until we get the orange thing resolved, we have people that painted their houses, and now they have orange spots on a new painted house.
That's terrible.
So until the well is good-
And we gotta be careful. If we come out there and remove it-
Yeah, but what about removing it from an original white? It is the original color, it's not ever been painted.
And that's not a problem, but it's, we, but then the person, the person next door just had their house painted, well, I want it removed off my house. And we've gotta be careful, we gotta do the research on it to make sure we don't damage the paint job, because then we're gonna be repainting houses. And, and that won't be cheap.
How much money have we withheld from them?
About six hundred dollars?
About nine hundred, I think we're at three months. So, you know, I think that will offset.
And, and that, we just went back to Aquarius, that's the reason why they're not anxious to put in new equipment, because they know they're going away. With the reclaim water, we don't need iron treatment. And I suspect that Swift Mud is gonna, is gonna fertilize these wells. I don't think you'll ever be, be able to reactivate them again. Uh, um, I remember when Swift Mud was putting it in, they, oh, yeah, you won't have any problem with, 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 uh, sinkholes, and you won't have any problem with rust, and and you'll never run out of water.
Oh.
There's been collapsed wells, and we know about sinkholes, and we know about rust. And it was amazing, one of the board members for Swift Mud was also the one that did the drilling of the wells.
Yes, he was on the board.
Yes.
Yeah, well, we have, we have friends that their livelihood is drilling wells, and when we told him all the problems we were having in here, he's like, whoever dug your well didn't go deep enough. They hit the first water they could and stopped. And they should've kept drilling until they got clear water, and they didn't.
And if you ask the county how deep our wells are, it's eighty to a hundred and twenty feet deep. They don't know.
It hits a blocker at one eighty, they think the one at the sign is one sixty, and it, it was certified as two twenty.
Oh, well. Anyway, um, Aquarius is not doing their work, and I'm making a motion to terminate the contract with Aquarius and tell them to remove their equipment.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Is it, is it too soon to, uh, get rid of them because of the fact that we don't have the water yet?
That, that makes no difference, is it?
We're not paying them anyway. They're sort of, they're not putting the stuff in there, are they?
Well, they, they-
Oh, yeah, they're still, they, they haven't, that's what's-
They use a sedimentation type of tank. Okay, they're not, I don't think they're using chemical additives. They're just using a sedimentation. The sedimentation's not working, cause the tanks are full.
They supposedly flush them. We were the guinea pigs on that, if you remember, and I have suggested to them, that's the problem, is that you perfected it, so replace ours with the newer technology, the newer, you know, new improved version. Uh, we've asked that time to time again, and no, no, they're, they're working fine, there's no, and, and I said, look around.
Yeah, they, they-
It isn't working.
They quote test the water, and they say there's not an, there's not a rust problem, yet you look at the houses, and it contradicts what they're saying.
But if we, if they pull their equipment, are we still gonna have watering?
Oh, yeah, though it's not gonna affect the wells.
Connected to the, yeah.
Straight through?
It's not big.
Yeah, they'll just be a piece put in, and they'll probably come out and whack it here, and we'll have to get the irrigation company to connect it.
Okay, Sandsberry. Okay. Any further board discussion? Any resident comments?
Yes, I don't think they should get off the hook with termination. We were paying them to keep the rust off our houses. They should, they should be on notice that they're liable for the rust on the houses that have rust. Whether you're gonna ever collect it or not, they shouldn't be allowed to take their equipment out of there until a resolution comes about what they're gonna do to take care of the problem that they didn't prevent. And, and secondly, before they take their equipment out, since they had to cut the pipe to put their equipment in, they should be responsible for putting the piece back in there. We shouldn't have to pay Sandsberry to do that.
Did you knock the camera offline?
No, he's good.
I don't know if we're legally allowed to keep that equipment.
No, we aren't.
Terminate the contract.
But secondly, there is a, I learned about this last week, and you'll learn about it at seven-twenty, there is a, an omission clause that you can't enforce something you've not been enforcing. We know there's a rule here in Heritage Pines about parking pickup trucks and taking trash out early. There is a rule about that. And because the master declaration requires a two-thirds vote of fourteen-hundred-six homes, we can't even get close to that. We can't, we, we're not enforcing, Heritage Pines is not enforcing that rule. This act of omission makes that rule unenforceable. We are in effect, uh, Pinecrest Village has done the same thing with this water treatment company. We have not enforced the rule that they take care of the rust. So we may, do we wanna get into a legal battle, and Kim will check this out, but do we wanna get into a legal battle with them or removing rust?
I don't think so.
Probably not, no.
There's, yeah, there's, there's another component to that, is that in their paperwork, when we signed on with them, they, they cover that part of it, where they say they will treat the water to minimize iron staining, and they will, they won't use the word eliminate or prevent. And so that's their out. They came out and cleaned it once, but since then, they've not been willing or anything to do anything else. And, and unfortunately, the, the change seems to have come, um, strongly when the son and daughter took over the business and the father retired, because we, originally, we were getting much better, and, uh, in the, in the beginning, it wasn't, um, they were coming out and addressing the problems. The denial has been in the last several, and, and every time he comes out, shows us a little two, two ounce tube that says, see, it's clear, and I say, see, it's not, but they, they do cover that in the paperwork where it just says minimize and, and, um, not, but not prevent or eliminate.
He's actually looking at a tube and saying, see, it's clear?
Oh, he pulls it out there, and he puts his little drops in there, and then, yeah.
It's five parts per million is what we're getting, so.
And, oh, and it, it really is, it's, it's a little vial, like, tech, smaller than the pool water one.
Okay.
It's really small.
So anyway, the motion is to terminate the contract with Aquarius. We have a second. Any further discussion? Any by, uh, any further board discussion? Call for vote, signify yes by raising your hand. It is unanimous. Okay, third agenda item, debris removal, or debris from the lawn, the lawn care company. Um, that has been an ongoing issue since, since the sun started rising. Uh, they, you can tell them that, if you stand out there, they know they're not supposed to do it. If you stand out there, they will go, oh, and they'll come up to your house, and they'll blow it away from the house. But if you're not there, you're gonna find stuff all over your house. We need to restate, uh, uh, my motion is to reinforce with Ryan's that debris is not to be blown back into the gardens or into the lawn. They can blow it between the sidewalk and the street, that area of grass, I don't have a problem with. But not to blow back-
Was it better yesterday for just-
No.
Okay, just asking, because I spoke to him yesterday before they were there, I don't know if it got conveyed to the crew.
Uh, it may have gotten conveyed to the crew.
We're spoiled from the last, uh, landscapers.
Well, they got, they were, they got very negligent at the end. At the beginning, you see them pushing gra- mounds of grass down the street.
Yeah.
And actually, grass has nitrogen in it, you-
Oh, you know, when, when, right-
It helps it, but where the problem is right now, these oak trees are shedding leaves. They cut the grass, it looks really good, and the people that don't have oak trees, their yards, their yards look really good. And then you run across the brown lawn. It's only because the grass has been covered up by leaves that have been blown back in there. So that, they, and they know they're not supposed to. So. Anyway, that's my motion. Do I have a second?
I think it's a good one. I'll settle it.
You can't settle.
Any second?
Second.
Okay, Jenny's got a second. Okay, any board discussion? Dennis?
Why can't we have the landscape company be told to blow all the debris out to the street like the other landscape, landscape company did? And then pick everything up and take it away, instead of blowing it back onto the lawns and into the flower beds?
Will they charge us more for it?
The other, I don't recall them, the other one took it away?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, he did, yeah.
Blew it into the street, down the block.
I was gonna say, cause they aren't, cause-
Or actually, I saw them blow it down a storm right in the-
Yeah, that's why I saw-
That's the problem. She weren't allowed to take it away, cause, because it has fertilizer on it and pesticides, it's considered hazardous waste. So they can't just dispose of it the way they are. That's why years ago, they required them to get multi-mowers.
I think they were blowing it down storm rates.
Remember they was used to bag everything?
Yes, they were blowing it down storm rates.
So I'm saying, they, that's them, the, the taking it away surprises me, the last company.
Well, there's gotta be-
Maybe they were blowing it in the street and, and blowing it somewhere like you said, which is not-
Some kind of solution anyway, because when they edge, edge the sidewalk in the driveway, they just blow the stuff back into where they edge, so what do you bother and edge and throw? When they cut the grass and that, they blow everything back onto the lawn and into the flower bed, so it, it doesn't make sense.
Okay.
Next term, so why don't we meet, um, Dennis, why don't we meet Ryan out here there and, and come up with what they can do? I think if they had to bag it and take it away, they would charge more because, and I'm not even sure they're allowed to anymore.
Okay, all right.
Because it was several years ago.
But this is a motion just to make them aware that we are not happy with that.
But we still wanna address it specifically.
We don't wanna blow, we don't want the dead leaves blown back in the yard.
And, and I, I don't, I'm not sure, cause I'm not home when, when they cut the lawn and everything, and who, who oversees them every week or once a month and checks what they're doing and, and make sure that they're doing the right job?
We did have Rob Bruno. I do have a person that sent me an email, said he would like to be on the grounds committee, and I, I sent out the criteria. I think everybody got a copy of that email, where you're checking the mower height, you're checking that they're doing this, and you're checking with, uh, Sandsberry to make sure that if there's a sprinkler head or something that you notice. All of these things that have to do with grounds, if you see a house that's not maintaining the house the way it should be kept, it should be on appearance, they can, they can call it in and say, hey, we got a house that's, they're not compliant.
I think, though, if you're gonna have somebody that's gonna oversee them, they have to do it every week, not once a month. But then once a month, it gets too out of hand.
It is once a week.
Before we had, um, what they did is, Rob Bruno was the contact.
Yeah.
When they arrived, the foreman went and checked in with him, and when he left, he checked in with him, and then if there was anything going on-
No offense to Rob Bruno, but, you know, Rob Bruno didn't do his job.
But I'm just saying, that was, that, so they're willing to do that if we have the contact, and absolutely.
Cause it just seems like nobody's reaffirming to them, that's all. I think they do a decent job, but nobody's-
And I was, I was trying to say, as a demonstration of they, yes, they're absolutely willing to do that and work with whoever's, you know, available.
Good, okay. So the motion on there, I'm sorry, go ahead, John.
I'm just, I had to go out and buy a rake, it's that bad. That the leaves left on my lawn, it just, the grass, so I'm just raking it myself and bagging it up, because they just blow it back in.
I will qualify that a little bit. If it's the leaves that are falling from the tree, the mowers may not pick it up and expel it off the yard. It may be still there, and you may have to rake. I know, I had to rake mine three or four times last year when I had the oak tree, and you get a lot of leaves. If it's leaves that are being blown back on there, that's the issue.
That's what I think.